I encourage me to the Upshur County Commission to order. We will have a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge lives to admire the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Good morning. Go ahead, Mary.
The first minutes are June 3rd, 2016 special meeting. The County Commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, have their regular meeting at the Courthouse Amex on Thursday, June 2, 2016 at 9:00 a.m. Terry Cutright, Department of Heating and Doors, President, Terry Cutright, Commissioner, J.C. Rafferty, Commissioner, Troy Brady, Commissioner, Carrie Wallace, County Administrator, Tabitha Perry, Assistant County Administrator, Jacqueline McLaughlin, Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by a pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the special meeting minutes of May 19, 2016 as submitted. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of May 26, 2016 as submitted. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the 2016 primary election campus minutes of May 16, 2016 as submitted. David Beckner, Wastere Estate Manager for Ryan Environmental LLC, did not appear for his scheduled 9:15 annual appointment concerning construction of youth soccer fields for the youth of Buckham. Terry Cutright requested Carrie Wallace to follow up with Mr. Beckner and suggest that he contact the county lead to discuss scheduling for use of the fields at the Wallace complex. The Commission currently has a lease agreement with county lead for a period of 10 years. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the Nathaniel Warren Beckner State Order overruled in response to a state claim of West Virginia University Oscars as required by the state. Carrie Wallace provided a review of Upshur County's mission statement for the purpose of meeting grant requirements set by the West Virginia Division of Justice and Community Services. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the mission statement. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved WYP Associates Incorporated Project Manual and Bid Ever Taxman for the Upshur County Courthouse for Free Care Project and bid invitation. There will be a mandatory pre-bid conference at 3:00 p.m. on Thursday, June 16, 2016. Bids must be received no later than 9:00 a.m. on Thursday, June 30, 2016. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved and authorized the precedent to sign correspondence to Artesian Process Chemicals Group advising of cancellation of water treatment services effective July 1, 2016. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the precedent to sign the purchase agreement for chemicals and service by between Industrial Water Resources Incorporated and the Upshur County Commission in the amount of $225 per month effective July 1, 2016. Laurie Aldrich Harvey, Upshur County Family Resource Network Director, appeared before the Commission and provided a reading of her composition, "Do You Really See Me?", which reflects on the lives of abused or neglected elderly. Ms. Aldrich Harvey then read the World Outer Abuse Awareness Day Proclamation, which designates June 15, 2016 as World Outer Abuse Awareness Day, Upshur County. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the signing of the proclamation. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the memorandum of understanding between Mountain Caph and West Virginia Incorporated, A.C., D.C., and the Upshur County Recreational Park. The agreement sets forth the rights and responsibilities of each partner insofar as they relate to the planning and operation of the summer food service program. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign a Pitney Bose steak and local fair market value lease for the mail machine in the courthouse location for a term of 60 months at the rate of $708.94 per month billed quarterly at $2,126.82. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the policy manual for the Upshur County Pool for the 2016 season. Members of the James Curry Library and Park Advisory Board appeared before the Commission to discuss a request for full-time employment with benefits. Forehead Librarian Judith Williams, Albert Lake, spokesperson for the group, reviewed the evolution of the library operations since Ms. Williams became employees, part-time librarian. Mr. Lake advised that the library usage has increased and Ms. Williams has created and implemented various programs to keep children interested in reading and learning. Carrie Wallace provided budget information to demonstrate the financial feasibility and board members reviewed a proposal for the sale of timber from the Curry properties to demonstrate the financial sustainability for the employment status change. Ms. Wallace advised that Ms. Williams was also agreed to return to part-time employment in event that the library would be unable to sustain Ms. Williams' full-time employment. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved request for a change of employment status from part-time to full-time with benefit package for Ms. Williams at her current wage rate and will be effective on July 1, 2016. Commissioners commended Ms. Williams for her dedication and her achievements at the library. Carrie Wallace commented that, quote, "Judith is carrying half the wishes of Mr. Curry on top." The Commission received a list at 10:00 a.m. The Commission reconvened at 10:09 a.m. Judith Williams appeared before the Commission and provided a review of a grant which the Curry Library has received from the Pilgrim Foundation. Ms. Williams advised that the library is accepting donations and selling small notebooks at $2 and reusable fabric bags with the library logo at $3 in order to raise $400 for the two-to-one grant funding match, which will provide the library with $1,200 of buy-in books. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the advertisement slash job posting for the position of E-911 Communications Center Director in Training for Publication. Applications must be received by the close of business on Friday, June 17, 2016. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the resignation of Hannah Clark as Law Enforcement Administrative Assistant effective May 12, 2016. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the advertisement slash job posting for the position of Full-Time Law Enforcement Administrative Assistant. Applications must be received by 4:00 o'clock by Monday, June 13, 2016. Terry Cutright reviewed the following for your information items. Number one, James Curry Public Library July 2016 calendar. Number two, James W. Curry Public Library July 2016 calendar. Three, James W. Curry On Your Mark Get Set Read Flyer. Four, Upshur County Sheriff's Office, April 2016, Miles reporting. Five, Upshur County Sheriff's Financial Statement for Period Ending March 2016. Six, agendas and/or notice of meetings as listed. Seven, meeting minutes as listed. Eight, meetings as listed. Nine, appointments needed or upcoming assistance. The Commission approved all invoices for payment. The Commission approved all vacation orders. The Commission approved the following settlements as listed. Steve Linger, E-911 Communications Center Director, appeared before the Commission to discuss staffing and operations of the E-911 Communications Center, requesting to meet in Executive Session. On motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission entered Executive Session at 10:33 a.m. President, Terry Cutright, J.C. Rafferty, Troy Brady, Carrie Wallace, Tabitha Perry, and Steve Linger. The Commission returned to open session at 11:45 a.m. No decisions were made in Executive Session. The Commission reviewed agenda items for future meetings, upcoming closings, and discussed administrative business items. With note for the business on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission meeting adjourned at 12:35 p.m. Upshur County Commission Meeting, June 3, 2016 special meeting. The County Commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, held a special meeting at the Courthouse Amex on Friday, June 3, 2016 at 3:00 p.m. Terry Cutright called the meeting to order. President, Terry Cutright, Commissioner, J.C. Rafferty, Commissioner, Troy Brady, Commissioner, and Carrie Wallace, County Administrator. All motions cast unanimously unless otherwise stated. The Commission moved to the Second floor courtroom, Judges' Chambers, to discuss options for adding space for circuit court offices and judicial hearings. More space is required due to the addition of a new judicial position for the maintenance election. Judge Jacob Reeger and Judge Kirk Hall were present and expressed concerns about the current space, made suggestions for their needs, and discussed requirements of the West Virginia Trade Court of Appeals. Greg Harris, Director, Facilities Operations, provided information and data about possible renovations within the building and other suggested locations. Commissioners will follow up with Judge Sowa for his input. No decisions were made. With note for the business on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission meeting adjourned at 4:00 p.m.
You've already read the amendments of June 2, 2016, and June 3, 2016. Are there any additions? All other things are approved.
Send them through.
Send them through. Then move the second on favor, say if I'm saying aye. Assistant for our County Administrator, what maybe you may have the meetings. She is participating in the conference call as she's listening in. We don't have any appointments, so we'll write in the discussion. All the way is that the position of the Upshur County Farm and Land Protection Board, the Correspondents' Line, Chairman, Chair, Mr. White's term is set to expire on June 30, 2019. Not motion to approve.
Send them through.
Send them through. Then move the second on favor, say if I'm saying aye. Eyes out, so ordered. Two, approval and signature of a letter of commitment to the Central West Virginia Development Association regarding the potential community center at the James W. Curry Library from Upshur County Development Authority Broadband Expansion Project Funding. Do I have a motion to approve?
Send them through. And I'd like to comment that this is in line with last week's decision by the Commission, the recommendation of the Advisory Board to hire the librarian full-time, Judith Williams. She is, you know, echoed comments, very positive comments on her abilities last week in assuming that position. I think that should broadband be authorized to be extended allocation, this could be a great, great thing for that part of the county.
They have the broadband now with the fiber, but it's just the wires.
It would just.
Save them a lot of money, too.
And it would just be a fantastic thing to occur.
I think there may be some confusion.
Okay.
The Curry Library already has internet, however, it doesn't meet the requirement to be considered truly high-speed broadband internet. The Development Authority is putting in a broadband expansion application through the Central West Virginia Development Association's grant, and they're asking the James W. Curry Library if they would be willing to be made as a community center. And if they would, they have the potential to receive what's called a Crown P.O., which would be an addition to the children section of the Curry Library. So this letter is a letter from the Commission committing to being open to these hours that are listed here, which are just your current hours that you're already open. It's the grant to be awarded so you can consider it a community center and also have access to this broadband internet that will be put into place. If the grant's received, you can cancel the internet you have currently, and this internet will be received for free.
Okay.
But it becomes a community center, which would be a positive thing for that part of the county.
Yes.
Thank you, Carrie.
You're welcome.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Send them through.
Send them through. Then move the second on favor, say if I'm saying aye. Eyes out, so ordered. Item three, correspondence from Tabitha, our Curry Assistant County Administrator, requesting the approval to change lap swimming at Buckham Upshur Recreation Park from 6:45 a.m. on Saturday and Sundays to 6:30 a.m. upon June. Lap swimming will remain at 6:45 a.m. on Monday through Friday. Was the main problem was changing that?
No. And Chuck Lake has testified that he believes more people will attend lap swimming if it's changed to 10:30 a.m. on Saturday and Sunday.
And we don't have to have lap swimmers on weekends through that lap swimming?
I do not believe so, but there will be people there doing paperwork in the office.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Send them through.
Send them through. Then move the second on favor, say if I'm saying aye. Eyes out, so ordered. Four, review and discuss two proposals for technical GIS support service for Upshur County, West Virginia, from Landmark Geospat. After discussion, approval, and signature of one contract, this contract provides upon an as-needed basis, the Upshur County Office of Addressing and Mapping may contact Landmark with general GIS support inquiries and minimal GIS tasks. Upon one, all GIS work and technical support provided by Landmark outside of the bounds of any current or future contracts with Upshur County for $450 per month and $65 per hour for all work exceeding eight hours a month. Option two, all GIS work and technical support provided by Landmark outside of the bounds of any current or future contracts with Upshur County will be billed at an hourly rate of $65 per hour. Terry, do you have some information?
I just was here in case you guys had any questions. Definitely, it would be my recommendation that if you're going, we're going to enter into an agreement, which I do think that we need to do, because we don't currently have a support contract in place with Landmark for straight, or geospatial. I would recommend that we would only do the $65 per hour agreement versus the monthly agreement. On average, I would say I'd maybe call Landmark four or five times a month on, you know, on average, and it might be a 10-minute conversation that I have with them. So I just don't think that we would be getting our money's worth if we would enter into a monthly contract with them. I think that we would be better ahead to just do an hourly rate with them.
Terry, do you, if they approve the ordinance, could you keep a spreadsheet of your contact with them so we can ensure we're making orders properly?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Now, this is separate from the other thing that we talked about.
Right, correct. Currently, right now, with Landmark, they are hosting our web hosting site, which is the Addressing and Mapping Project that allows other governmental agencies to be able to view that information, and it relates to the assessor's parcel information, the Addressing and Mapping Project, voter registration information, flood plain information, that type of GIS-related software. And they're hosting it on a server at Landmark to where we can access it via the internet. And they're doing monthly updates, and that, there is a contract in place with Landmark right now for that service. And so this would be above and beyond that contract. This is something completely different. The maintenance support for the Addressing and Mapping would be, like, if I'm out on the road and I assign an address to a wrong structure or something, and I need to call them, or I can't get it downloaded after I've been in the field or something of that nature, then I will call them and be able to get it situated. And a lot of times, they do it remotely. They're not, they don't actually come into the office and do my work or assist with a project like that. They can just log on to me remotely, and we can work through it and be done.
Okay. Is this every project that needs to be actually taken now, or can we defer until we have the time sheets that Carrie was referring to?
Well, as of right now, we do not have any type of contract in place with them. So if I were to call them, they could actually say, oh, sorry, we're not gonna help you. So that's why I think it's kind of important to get something in place with them now so that we don't have that service stopped. And then I can just periodically, you know, kind of like what we're doing with our gas card, you know, I can just keep a list of, these are how many times I've called and how long I was on the phone with, and just give it to Tabitha to provide to you.
So now, there's no minimum charge? In other words, whether it's 10 minutes, they charge it for 10 minutes? They don't charge it for 45 minutes or an hour?
Right. Whenever I talk to Lucian, and that's who this agreement came from, he did say that it will be billed according to how long we've actually worked together. It's not like if I call one time and I'm on there with 10 minutes and they do it, that it's gonna be an hour charge. They will pro-rate or keep track of, you know, how long we're on the phone or working on a project together and bill accordingly.
And if I read this right, if we do the $450 per month, that entitles us to eight hours a month?
Right.
And you don't believe we've been on the, that's about $520 a month?
No. I do not believe that I've ever on the phone with Landmark eight hours a month, no.
So option two would be your recommendation?
It would be, yes.
The hour rate as needed?
Correct.
I would make a motion if we adopt option two as the contract basis for the work.
And I would accept that.
It's been moved the second on favor, say if I'm saying aye. Eyes out, so ordered. Thank you, Terry.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
Five, correspondence from Patty Adams, Chairman of the Upshur County Republican Executive Committee, requesting the use of courthouse supplies on Monday, June 20, 2016, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. to celebrate West Virginia's birthday with cake and drinks. Ms. Adams is also requesting that the committee be provided the use of two tables and 10 chairs. Do you do this every year? Do I have a motion to approve?
Send them through.
Send them through. Then move the second on favor, say if I'm saying aye. Eyes out, so ordered. Item six, correspondence from Rachel Atkins, Newspapers and Education Director, requesting the donation of pool passes for the purpose of a raffle to raise money for the newspapers and education group, a nonprofit organization managed by the Intermountain. Typically, we've been going up 10 pool passes?
Day passes.
Yeah, 10 day passes. Do I have a motion to approve? 10 day passes?
Send them through.
Send them through. Then move the second on favor, say if I'm saying aye. Eyes out, so ordered. Approval of, item seven, approval of advertisement for full-time E-911 Communications Center supervisor. Applicants must currently be employed with the Upshur County Commission, Upshur County Communications Center, and meet the requirements set for in the attached job description. Applications must be received before the close of business on Friday, June 24, 2016. Do I have a motion to approve?
Send them through.
Then move the second.
One, applications all we have so far from the day?
That's for the director in training position. This is for just a supervisor, which we currently receive.
We placed a supervisor.
Second.
Then move the second on favor, say if I'm saying aye.
I was assuming responsibility. I started, sorry.
Item eight, approval of correspondence from Tabitha, our Curry Assistant County Administrator, announcing the resignation of Joseph R. Hoxsey, Buckham Upshur Recreation Park Life Guard effective May 31, 2016. Do I have a motion to approve?
Send them through.
Send them through. Then move the second on favor, say if I'm saying aye. Eyes out. Item nine, approval of correspondence from Tabitha, our Curry Assistant County Administrator, announcing the resignation of Mary D. Sims, Buckham Upshur Recreation Park Life Guard effective May 31, 2016. Do I have a motion to approve?
Send them through.
Send them through. Then move the second on favor, say if I'm saying aye. Eyes out, so ordered. Approval of applications for donated leave.
Send them through.
Second. Then move the second on favor, say if I'm saying aye. Eyes out, so ordered. Correspondents from E-911 Telecommunicator requesting a short leave of absence from the communications center. Disemployed, intends to return to work on June 9, 2016. Item may leave to Executive Session for West Virginia Code 6984. Do I have a motion to move into Executive Session? Okay. So.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Send them through.
Then move the second on favor, say if I'm saying aye. Eyes out, so ordered. For your information, one, correspondence from David Beckner, volunteer at Upshur County Youth Soccer Coach regarding the lack of adequate soccer fields. Two, correspondence from Michael Keelman, Director of.
May I add something?
Thank you.
I just have a couple things to add on the correspondence. After our meeting last week, he recommended that I try to recommend their revenue, and I did so last Friday, engaging the number major league through the Tony League of the Wellness Complex. And he actually got that contact number for the Tony League president to speak with him. His main concern is that they would be the third group on the list to have access to those fields, and they're looking for additional fields. And we were not able to coordinate schedule for Mr. Beckner to be able to come in to go to meeting. However, I did read in the record that the city plan on appointing a study group to look into fields that would be available for youth soccer and other recreational uses. So they may be contacting one of the commissioners or commission staff to be on that study group.
What was that last statement, Carrie?
They may be contacting one of the commissioners or commission staff and asking if they would be willing to participate in that study group or local field.
I would probably recommend that they contact the Parks and Recreation Board and look for somebody to be on.
He is scheduled to meet with the Parks and Recreation Board. He was supposed to meet with them on June 13. However, that meeting has been canceled since there's not going to be a board, so the next meeting will take place July 11.
Are you talking about Mr. Beckner?
Yes.
I mean, the city, the city may want to talk to the Parks and Recreation Board to get a representative from the county that would fall in line with what the Parks and Recreation Board is all about. Okay, anything else, Carrie?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Two, correspondence from Michael Keelman, Director of Government Relations with Suddenland, regarding the termination of. Link, regarding the termination of out-of-market stations that have duplicate network affiliations with other existing inter-market stations effective June 29, 2016. We have correspondence from Russell Lawson, Senior Deputy State Auditor, County Collections Division of the West Virginia State Auditor's Office, enclosing a list of properties that will be offered for sale on July 12, 2016. Carrie, where will these be offered for sale at? Courthouse steps?
The state sell these, I believe that they would be sold here, but I can't guarantee. I'm scrolling down to the letter now.
To the nearest...
The attachment to see if it references the location.
To the nearest square. Did you show your check from the letter now?
Yes, and I don't see that it gives the location for the sale.
I think the first page of the attachment says July 12, 2016, at 10:30 a.m. in the hall of the Uptown County Courthouse.
Okay.
That is correct, that's what they have.
Okay, so it's gonna be in the courthouse hallway?
Yeah.
courthouse, okay, thank you, Carrie. Four, building permits made 2016. Five, Buckanupshire Chamber of Commerce news letter. Six, Uptown County Family Resource Network news letter for June 2016. Seven, notice of ribbon cutting ceremony at Tomlin Clutter Funeral and Cremation, June 11, 2016. Eight, notice of Uptown County Family Resource Network fundraising event, June 28, 2016. Nine, Uptown County E911 communications reports, May 2016. Ten, agendas and/or notices of meetings. Eleven, meeting minutes. Twelve, meetings. Thirteen, appointments needed or upcoming. We still have table with Dave Kaufman, Uptown County Sheriff, discussing the very year 17 budget and employee compensation, number one, and number two, James Perry Citizens Court Council member, discussing county budget and related spending and authorization procedures and respects to serfs. I'd like to take that, bring that back out. I would take that off the table, Carrie. By motion, or?
Yeah, you can just have that, I think it was from there.
Okay, I'm not with the serf representatives.
Actually, it's the court council representative, which never need.
Yeah, Tuesday. And what we'd like to do is have an approval today, if you guys agree to it, that if they wanna purchase something or have a class, they call Carrie, and she'll have a spreadsheet, since the money's in our general fund. She'll have a spreadsheet, and she'll look to see if the money's available for them. And for this, she'll approve it, they'll go ahead and do it, bring an invoice to Carrie, and she'll take it to Carol, and Carol will have the check.
Is that money within the budget? Would that be money within the budget?
Yeah, that would be money that they have, you know, because they have some other monies too. But I'm saying, as far as the monies that were involved.
So, right now, within the OEM budget, there's a serf line item in this year, or for those F-line subsidies, if we are to allocate $750. So, I would just create a spreadsheet with $150, and if they would like to spend $500, they would call, I would subtract the $500 and let them know that they have money there, and they would order whatever it is that they would have voted to order for the $500. Now, I would not ask them unless they were ordering, or what purpose it was for, or any type of questions of that nature. I would just verify that the money was left in that line item. Now, a question that I have is whether or not you want me to make those purchases on my P-card. See, part of the reason why you would ask Joe Farrell to supervise the spending was because he was making the purchases on his P-card, and he would have to sign authorization, authorizing the expense. So, am I gonna be signing for the person, of course, I'm gonna know in advance what it is, I'm just gonna be signing that, yeah, this is an authorized purchase for $500, or whatever it might be.
Yeah, rather than put it on your P-card, I think I'd, personally, I'd rather they just bring an invoice, and you take it down to Carol. I think I'd rather do it that way, Carrie.
Okay.
You see any problems with that?
No, not unless they're doing an online purchase for equipment that you can pay for by invoice that's made to do upfront. I mean, that would be an issue. See, the problem is they don't have their own accounting account because they're not entitled to be free.
Exactly right, yeah.
So, they don't have any other valuable payments other than using a county P-card or requesting a check from you.
Well, what if we approved it with them bringing the invoices in, taking them to Carol, unless it's an Internet or a purchase that has to be paid for when ordered? And then, use your...
And then, half days would be wanting to put it on my P-card?
Yeah.
Okay.
Would that work?
Yeah.
Did you guys agree with that? I'm not sure I understand what we're giving, we're giving an authority to expend funds through Carrie, it's oversight. Yeah, the only thing she's doing is checking to make sure they have the money available in the budget that we reset for.
The way I understand it, they have $750 set aside.
That's next year, yeah.
Correct. FY '17. If, in fact, they want to have a class or whatever, it costs $400 or $500, we have them to check with Carrie. You know what I mean? If they need to order something, she'll put it on the P.O. card. If they can cut a check, we'll have Carol to cut a check. And I think that's just a safety feature that they don't look at $750 right and have a problem.
So, do I have a motion to approve?
It's been moved second, all favor, sir, if I'm saying aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
I have a couple other questions related to that topic. During our conversation, we discussed background checks for volunteers. So, how do we know whether we're doing a volunteer check? And there are certain boards require volunteers to have background checks. Well, currently, there are 200 serf volunteers. So, my question is, will either require all of those serf volunteers to have background checks, or even bring father and son, and then they require new serf volunteers to have background checks? And regardless of do you require them to have background checks, is that only a serf one you have to be for, or is it a commission that you have to be for? It's the captain's test for background check, and the charge is $50 per person.
How much is that again, Carrie?
$15. One five.
One five. I have to think about that. I have a problem with the county paying for that background check if, for all new members, when they have, you know, in other words, just anybody could join and maybe not even participate, or take the training, and here we are paying a $15 fee with no guarantee that it's gonna follow through.
So, what would your recommendation be?
I didn't understand.
What would your recommendation be?
I don't know if I have one. Do you guys, what's your feelings on that?
Would you like to talk about the background check once the volunteer manual is complete and adopted, because you're gonna have to address the background check for all...
I think we can defer until that occurs. One, to operation, someone volunteering, is that a burden to have them pay for their own background check? I don't know if that's a positive way to solicit volunteers. The other point is well-taken, that the county, for 200 people, I guess, having to go back and update the records, it'd be an expensive proposition as well. I think it's something that before we really make a decision today, we should get some input, get the policy, you know, handbook taken care of, and then through some sort of discussion and study, come up to some conclusion, or come to some conclusions as to what the best methodology is for accomplishing that.
Yeah, I need to thank the department.
So, do you think...
Ms. Wallace.
Carrie?
Carrie? It wouldn't be that much different from what the firemen have to do, followed their problem. They have to pay for their own training. I mean, if they go to school for, how many hours do they have to go? And, you know, they want to perform after they are accredited. This year's only $15. I mean, in a year's time, say, they serve a year, they get their money back. I mean, that would be the only penalty, a year's service, or six months, or whatever. I mean...
Yeah, I would, I would probably go along with something like that.
But firemen, they don't get no, they don't get a return, except the pleasure of the work.
Yeah. And they pay for their own training? Does the fire department or the firemen themselves, volunteers pay for their training?
The volunteers, they, I don't know what all kind of training they have to have.
I said 240 hours, some computer training.
But they have to go to, like, Paramount and different places to get this training. You know, it's different training going on in different places, all kinds. And I don't know what, there's like, maybe 60 to 80 hours of training that they have to go through. And it's, I don't know whether the fire department would pay for their training, but they have those hours involved.
See, my inference was the fire department would try and pay for the, I think it's 240 hours to be certified, people were doing, and I thought that part of it is now online, and some of it is all physically, where you have to attend classes. But I thought the departments paid for that, paid for the turnout gear and everything with the...
I'm not sure, but I, you know, the men that volunteer for the fire department have a lot of hours involved. That's why the volunteerism has dropped off.
If we don't stop that today, do we title it, Carrie?
Well, really, it is related to the spending authorization, so I don't even think it's a high meeting table or just something that I'll bring back up once your volunteering is approved.
Once the hammer, okay. All right, let's do that. We'll just... Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you. Now, you need to vote on those serf spending authorization, if you're gonna go and clear your fees for voting.
We did, we did. We did, and it was approved.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that they, you know, if it's a class or something like that, they bring a receipt to you, and then you have Carol, if you approve it, you have Carol, shoot, I'm saying this all wrong. First, they call you and find out if they have the money in the account. Then, if they do, they bring you a receipt, and you take it to Carol, have her pay, unless it's an online order or something that has to be paid for at the time of purchase, and then they use your P-card, or you use your P-card. Okay, and we did approve that.
Okay, I can say this as a person, that I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
J.C. and Patty?
Abby, Nancy.
All right, our next regular...
Yeah, Ms. Wallace, did you want to inquire about the payment of volunteers teaching classes?
Yeah, thank you. The other item that was discussed on Tuesday, because that during the public hearing, the commission had made the statement that they didn't believe that volunteers, serf volunteers should be paid to teach other serf volunteers the training that required to become serf members. After discussions with ETC on Tuesday, they believed it would be very, it would be very difficult for them to get volunteers, volunteer 40 hours in their time to teach these classes without being compensated.
As a matter of fact, I think they were having trouble getting volunteers to teach until they started paying. If that, I think that's what Brad Montgomery said.
That was the comment where I made it off, ETR made, I believe.
Okay. All right. If you're following the recommendation, then if their recommendation was to expend funds from the money allotted by the commission on training, that would be under their decision is to expend those funds.
Yeah, correct.
So, it would be handled the same as any other request for expenditure of funds.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, J.C. Our next regular meeting of the Uptown County Commission, June 16, 2016, at 9:00 a.m. at Uptown County Courthouse Annex. The commission meeting on Thursday, June 23, 2016, has been canceled. Thank you.